We will call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council on Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Howell.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
Moran.
Here.
And Aquino.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Sheldon is absent.
Okay, and if you would all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, a fair, open, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any agenda updates?
You have no agenda updates this evening.
Well, good evening. As many of you know, our Assistant City Manager Jim Francis is retiring at the end of this month, and we could not let his final council meeting of his career go by without acknowledging all of his incredible service to the city of Folsom. So Jim, come on up.
Unless, of course, he comes to complain about something after retirement, but...
Okay, I have here a resolution of commendation honoring Jim Francis for his outstanding service to the city of Folsom. Whereas Jim Francis first joined the city of Folsom exactly 12 years ago to the day as the city's Human Resources Director, Finance Director, and Chief Financial Officer, adding a magical three-in-one bundle of expertise to the city organization just when we needed it the most. Whereas Jim Francis helped to navigate the city through the Great Recession, making wise recommendations in a balanced, strategic combination that allowed the city to fiscally weather the storm without compromising customer service and core activities and programs. Whereas Jim Francis also deployed his brilliant mind to help craft and implement a comprehensive financing plan for development in the Folsom Plan area that will bear fruit for decades to come. And whereas Jim Francis knows when the answer must be no, and isn't afraid to say so, and yet can also almost always find a way to get to creative yes, his trusty scratchpad of notes frequently yielding strategies and suggestions that no one else had contemplated or considered. Whereas Jim Francis is a treasured colleague, friend, and at times mentor to not only each member of the city council, but also the city's executive management team, thanks to his intelligence, candor, dry sense of humor, and tremendous kindness. Whereas Jim Francis was promoted by the current city manager to Assistant City Manager in July of 2018, and gracefully, graciously, and seamlessly has continued to wear multiple hats in support of the city organization and its residents up to this very moment. And whereas Jim Francis never missed a step during his long and storied career, despite sacrificing a knee to the city of Folsom organization, and for that, we are all grateful. Now therefore, I, Sarah Aquino, Mayor of the City of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council and the citizens of this community, do hereby extend commendations in the highest regard to Jim Francis, and wish him, his wife, his children, and his grandchildren the best in his well-earned retirement. Passed and approved this 22nd day of September, 2020. So I know we have a lot of people who want to say things. Do you want Jim to go first, or you want to go first?
I will grab my notes and say a few things.
Okay.
Just make sure we get you on the mic.
If I say no, don't do it.
So, thank you, Mayor. This might be a little unorthodox, but I have been thinking about what I'd like to share about Jim with all of you and everyone out there tonight, and I finally landed on what I'd actually like to share is part of my last performance evaluation of Jim. It was in the form of a letter, and I'd like to read a part of that letter with you now if I could. So here goes. Dear Jim, as we complete another year together as city manager and Assistant City Manager, I want to thank you for your outstanding leadership and service. I have now completed all of my written evaluations of your fellow colleagues on the executive management team. I saved yours for last, as there is no natural template or category for you. There is no evaluation I can properly apply to you, because you float somewhere above all of that. You are, quite simply, an amazing mentor, and I will be forever grateful that you agreed to take on this role. I learn from you every single day, and that is no exaggeration. Your wisdom, sense of calm, kindness, and patience seems to be limitless. Thank you for being so expert in the black and white, but also being comfortable in the gray areas, where sometimes we need to dwell, as that's the best we're going to do. Thank you for pointing out the unintended consequences of each potential path. You are a mind reader. You show up with things that you've been noodling through that usually bring me joy and fascination over your genius brain. You are the consummate public servant, and Folsom is so lucky that you decided one day to head west, and I am the absolute luckiest. So there you have it. That's my unevaluation of you. I am Jim Francis's number-one fan. You've earned a groupie for life. Very sincerely, Elaine. That snippet represents about 20% of what I wrote to Jim in his evaluation, but I hope it gives everyone a flavor of who he is and how I feel about him, about you, Jim. He is extraordinary in the truest sense of the word, and anyone who has worked with him or for him knows that. Jim, on behalf of your entire executive management team, know that we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. We appreciate you, and we wish you nothing but happiness and joy in your retirement. Thank you.
I understand we might have a few callers on the line who would like to speak. Jen, are you there?
Hello. Hi, everyone. This is Jen Francis. I'm Jim's oldest daughter. I just wanted to thank you all on the council for inviting us to join you guys today, and actually to allow us to participate in one of these infamous city council meetings that we've heard so much about over the years. It's really nice to hear everyone's glowing comments about my dad, because I think that we all love and appreciate how wonderful he is as a father, and I'm so glad that you all got to see that, too. I want to thank you all for hiring him 12 years ago and allowing him to move out west, to be closer to his children, and now grandchildren. And Dad, congratulations on your retirement. We're looking forward to getting to spend more time with you and to all of your future adventures that we hope to be a part of with you.
Thank you, Jen. If you can hear me.
I can.
Okay, Kristin, are you on the line?
Yep, I'm here.
Welcome.
Thank you so much for having me. I want to first apologize if I'm emotional, because I'm a new mom, so I'll try to keep it together. I remember when my dad was ready to leave Connecticut and started searching for a job in California. I was so excited at the prospect of him moving to California to be closer to the three of us, but I was worried he wouldn't find another job like the one he had in West Hartford that was so professionally fulfilling. After he interviewed the city of Folsom, though, my concerns were gone. Not only had he found a job he was excited about in a city that was welcoming and had a sense of community, but he would go on to make lifelong friendships with his colleagues. Dad, your work ethic, dedication, professionalism, and drive to always learn and achieve more has truly been inspirational to me. I strive to incorporate the qualities that you modeled for me into my professional career, and I will model those same qualities to my son as he grows up. I want to thank the city of Folsom for bringing my dad to California and for treating him so well over the past 12 years. I'd also like to thank Elaine for including us today and for being the supportive city manager and person that she is, who made my dad look forward to going to work every day. And Dad, thank you for being such an inspiration to me in so many ways. Thank you for always supporting our family, and thank you for instilling the value of hard work in me. Although I know it's bittersweet for you to leave your job and colleagues, there is no one who deserves retirement more than you, and I'm so excited for your new job title as professional grandpa. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin.
I think we have Mike.
Phil Cooper, I said hi.
I think we have Mike and Ronan on the phone, too?
Yeah, we're here. Can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you, Mike. Go ahead.
Great. Yeah, so I'm Mike. I'm the youngest. We decided birth order was the way to go here. I have my wife Crystal here, and my son Ronan, and my daughter Fiona, and we're all listening in here. Our family has the distinction of having actually been able to live in Folsom for a while while my dad was working there, and so we've been threatening to call into one of these meetings for a while and, you know, bring up some questions and lots of questions and stuff. So, thank you, Elaine, for letting us join in on one of these. Like Kay said, we've heard about the town council meetings for years and years, so it's cool to be on one of them. But yeah, it's... So like I said, we, you know, I did get the chance to live in Folsom while my dad was working there, and I obviously also lived in West Hartford when he was working there, the town we grew up in. And so, that was really cool, having my dad be, you know, kind of, he was a finance manager and HR manager, town manager for a while there. So that was kind of a cool thing when I was a kid. For most of my friends, Town Hall is kind of some random building that nobody really knew what went on there or where it was, really, but for me, it was a very familiar place. And, you know, me and some of my buddies would stop by over the summer when we're in high school and make my dad take us to lunch and hang out in the offices and that kind of stuff, or even go to the little weight room they had there. And as a kid, we, my dad used to bring me in on the weekends, because you guys all know he works on the weekends. But, you know, just to get, maybe he was getting a book or doing a little bit of work or something like that. And, you know, I used to run around and grab office supplies and make bows and arrows out of the paper clips and rubber bands and things like that. So it was a lot of fun, and, you know, I learned some life skills there, so that was helpful. And then as I got older, it was cool to learn about, you know, some of the town management stuff, you know, how selling bonds to, you know, raise funds for the town, and, you know, hearing about union negotiations and things like that. And one of the things I do have to thank you for, Dad, is giving me appreciation for revenue that comes in from parking meters and parking garages and things like that, because it makes me less upset when I pay parking things, knowing that that money is going to, you know, the Parks and Rec Fund or something like that. So I do have to thank you there. But yeah, so growing up, it was a really cool job for my dad to have, and then it was fun to be able to live in another town that my dad was part of management for later. And like I said, my son Ronan was actually born up in Folsom, and we used to go to the Folsom Public Library, and, you know, we'd do the storytime there, and then come bother my dad afterwards and, you know, go around the offices there. So it's very cool that, you know, Ronan might have some of the same memories growing up that I had as a kid. And I think that's really cool. And it also gave me an opportunity, you know, to talk with some of my dad's coworkers, you know, when I was older, and really getting a better appreciation of, you know, how they felt about him. And, you know, it's very clear that, you know, as we've already heard, Dad, how well-respected you are and, you know, how everybody depends on you. And obviously, we know that from home, but it's cool to hear that from the town as well. And it's very clear that, you know, my dad's not only somebody that's dependable at work, but also, you know, people look to for leadership in general, which rings true from, you know, everything we know about him as well. So anyway, I just, you know, I wanted to take a minute just to thank my dad for all the work he's done over the years, and, you know, really making the places I lived better places. And so really, the, you know, the effort he's put in at work has made the places I lived most of my life better places to be. And so I just want to say thank you for that, Dad. And I know that, like I said, the people you work with are also really grateful for all the efforts you've put in over the years, and they're going to miss you when you're off designing your mini golf course here in retirement. And just lastly, I know there's thousands of people from Folsom and West Hartford, and your first stop there in Southern California, that whether they know it or not, you know, are grateful for all the efforts you've made over the years to make the places they lived better places to be. So I think we all just want to say thanks tonight, Dad, and, you know, obviously, from your family, we love you very much.
Thank you, Mike. And you know I'll be coming down in a few weeks, so get Ronan ready.
Yeah, I know. He's ready, believe me. And if you want to have your second stint after retirement as manager of Santa Barbara, we'd love to have you.
I think I'll pass on it.
Yeah, I've heard.
Well, I really, I really don't know what to say. I didn't expect this, and I didn't expect certainly to hear my kids. But I want you to know how much I care about all of you. And I am going to miss this place, you know? It's been a long career. Like I've said, it's 48 years for me. This is a little over 1,100 city council meetings I've been to in my career. So it's been a while. But as I said in my letter to, at age 70, and grandkids despoil, I have other things to go after at this point. And I truly do want to thank the city for giving me the opportunity to come here and to participate and make some contribution. This is a great city, and I've enjoyed every minute here. And I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Jim, I just got a text message from the Cats, and they want you to expand the catio in your spare time.
They've been after that for a while.
No, thank you for everything that you've done. You came in at a really hard time in our history and made life better when the economy was not being cooperative. And the number of hats that you wore was truly amazing. Thank you for everything you've done.
Yeah, I'll just add, Jim, you know, just thanks for deploying your many talents for the dozen years we had you here. You know, it really was exceptional, the roles you stepped in, and again, at critical times. And, you know, just thanks for making the city I live in a much better place with your dedication. And, but lastly, congratulations on your retirement. You know, well-earned, well-deserved.
Ditto. Great job. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Work on the catio. Mini golf course. Sounds like you're going to be very busy, actually.
Do the Cats play golf, too?
And I will just add that, you know, Mike and I have only been able to work with Jim for a little less than two years, but I knew right away that I liked him, because he reminds me a lot of my dad. Not only do they both wear the monogram cuffs and the cufflinks, and they kind of have this, you know, folksy personality about them, and as we heard, very wise, but I imagine Jen, Kristin, and Mike heard the same thing growing up that I heard, and that is, no, because I said so. And as we said in the resolution, Jim, a lot of times, you know, people were begging and pleading with you to say yes, and you had to be the strong, resolute, responsible, prudent one, and say no. And the city is better off because of that and because of you. So thank you very much, Jim, and enjoy your retirement. We'll do it one more time? Okay. Moving on to the next item, which is business from the floor. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda. But please keep in mind that because it's not on the agenda, state law prohibits us from deliberating or taking action. And I know, Mr. City Clerk, we have a couple speakers here in the chambers, and also, I think, a couple comments that are going to get right into the record.
We do. So we'll start with the speakers that are in the chambers, and our first speaker will be Michael Massengale, and Michael will be followed by Justin Sanders.
That's okay. Come on. Good to see you, Mike. Right there at the podium. Yeah.
Wow, how are you supposed to follow that? When I grow up, I want to be like this man, just from what I've heard. You remind me of my dad as well. You look like a pastor. And... Thank goodness for truth, right? My name is Michael Massengale. I'll be 55 in November. I live on the streets of Folsom. The last day I worked was July 24th of this year, and because of the pandemic, I'm assuming, I've never heard back from my previous employer, that I never got scheduled again. And at the time, because of personal things with, in my life, not drugs or alcohol, I'm a recovered junkie, and I've been clean since 9/21/09. And so I celebrate that as yesterday. And I can't tell you how many days clean I have, but I can tell you when I got clean. I've spent two years in Texas prisons, and I wouldn't send my enemy there. Since then, I have not been in trouble with the law. I've been a law-abiding citizen. After a year of staying in Texas, I found that I could get more help here in the state of California with the same felonies that I had. And so I left my four boys and my granddaughter in the state of Texas, and moved to California, went to the Salvation Army, graduated in six months, volunteered and stayed another three months, because the first six months was necessary. I stayed another three months and went out to Mather and stayed there for 11 months. It was a two-year job program at the time, and I was able to accomplish everything that I need to accomplish there. I put myself through school and became a drug and alcohol counselor. And I've done that for a couple of years. I've been able to practice in all modalities of treatment. And again, for the second time here in Folsom, I find myself homeless. It's not because of my choice. It's not because of lack of education, but it's because of things that's happened to me in my life. I was going to try to come up and try to use identifiers such as homelessness, such as a felon, such as a drug and alcohol, former drug and alcohol counselor, things of that nature, because those are identifiers. But that's not who identifies me. If a police officer was to ask me, and I don't have any ID, they'd say, "Can you identify yourself?" And I'd say, "Yes, sir, or yes, ma'am. My name is Michael Massengale." That's who I am tonight. That's how I'm identified. I don't look at myself as a homeless person. I look at myself as displaced. And you've got some great things here. Mayor Sarah, City Council, there's some great things going on here in Folsom. I've actually lived here in Folsom three times. The last place I lived was the Folsom Hotel, right there on Sutter Street. And boy, there's some stuff that goes on. I was right above the floor where the live band played. I was lucky that I worked at night, and I didn't have to worry about any of that. So I think I've got 10 seconds left, 11 seconds left. I would like to share with some of you folks some ideas, because in the state of Texas, I was actually over two programs where we helped the homeless, drugs and alcohol, and we had 83% success rate with those that were on drugs. And I, myself, was a beneficiary of one of those facilities, and I think that there's some things that could be done. Homelessness is not going to be overcome by getting rid of the homeless. We have to instill hope, and we have to instill dignity. So there are certain things that most of us would like: a hot meal, maybe a shower. I'm sorry that I'm coming this way tonight, and I'll try to do better next time, to better do some laundry, maybe a place to sleep that's safe, maybe a bathroom to use. And so, what do we have here in the city of Folsom that we might be able to use that we're not utilizing? And that's a question I just want to bring up, and I would like to share more with you one-on-one or at any other time that I might be able to. I've got 54 seconds left, or am I over time?
You're going out now, Mike, but...
I'm gone?
Well, I want to thank you for coming out. You and I have had many conversations, and I know where to find you, and we will continue those conversations. But I appreciate you coming here tonight.
All right, thank you. That was a great time.
Our next speaker is Justin Sanders.
Thank you, Michael. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, members of the public. Hi, my name is Justin Sanders, and I'm a Folsom resident for over 21 years. I'm here tonight to talk about an individual who's dedicated their life to public service. This individual served our country for 33 years, and the community of Folsom for over 32 years. Yes, I'm talking about Ernie Sheldon, our Vice Mayor. Ernie has over 65 years of public service protecting our country and the armed forces, along with his years of dedicated service to the community of Folsom. Ernie, as a Folsom resident for over 21 years, I would like to be able to make a difference in the city of Folsom, as you have. Please accept my utmost appreciation for your lifetime of public service. Public service is the ultimate sacrifice that one could give others. Please know the extreme amount of appreciation the community of Folsom has for you. Ernie Sheldon, you have made a difference in Folsom, and for that, I personally thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Sheldon isn't able to be here tonight, but we hope he is watching.
Okay, since we have no more speakers in the chambers tonight, we'll move to the email comments that have been submitted. There's five that I will read. The first is from Jacob Woodard, who writes, "My name is Jacob Woodard. I'm writing this to express my strong opposition to Prop 16. Proposition 16 uses race to judge the qualifications of applicants to universities, to jobs, et cetera. This is totally unconstitutional and against the American value of equal rights. This is a textbook definition of racism, pure and simple. Let's all not be misled by the ballot label. We should all say no to discrimination, and most of all, discrimination from the state level. Please vote no on Prop 16 in November. Thank you, Jacob Woodward, a very concerned citizen." Next is from Jessica, who writes, "My name is Jessica. I am a Folsom resident, a mom, and a state worker. I'd like to express my feeling about Proposition 16 and urge anyone who is disgusted by racial discrimination to vote against it on November 3rd. Proposition 16 is against the law and is legalizing discrimination. Please help to stop discrimination of any race in our community and in our state. I believe we should treat everyone equally, give them the opportunity to become successful in this great state. Vote no on Prop 16. Thanks, Jessica." Next is from Caroline Chen. She writes, "Honorable City Council, elected officials, et cetera. My name is Caroline Chen. I'm writing this message to ask you your help fighting against Proposition 16 and to prevent it from passing this November. Prop 16 is going to legalize inequality and injustice. While the protesters on streets are protesting against discrimination, the California State Assembly and California State Senate sneakily managed to put this discriminatory proposition on November ballot while we were and are busy and struggling to fight the COVID-19 pandemic. Instead of encouraging and awarding hard-working and merit, this proposition punishes the hard-working person by depriving their opportunity to go to college and get good jobs simply because of their skin color. Merit and academic achievement become nothing in front of skin color if Prop 16 is passed, and for sure, we know the severe consequences that will bring to this country in addition to extremely unfair treatment to the group of people discriminated by this proposition. This country is a great land of opportunity for everyone. It is so precious to all of us. We want to keep this country great. We want to have equal opportunity for all. The people had said no to SCA 5 in 2014, and we now..." The people had said no to SCA 5 in 2014 and we now need to say no again this November to stop this racist proposition from becoming law. We really appreciate your attention and effort to prevent this discriminatory proposition from becoming a law. Signed, Caroline Chen, a very concerned citizen." Next is from Bob Young, who writes, "Dear City Council members, city staff and fellow residents, as this election season is coming up, I would like to draw your attention to Prop 16, which is about government preferences. The California Constitution says that A, the state shall not discriminate against or grant preferential treatment to any individual or group on the basis of race, sex, color, ethnicity or national origin in the operation of public employment, public education or public contracting. Proposition 16 will strike out and eliminate this language from the California Constitution. No substitute is provided. However, the summary being put forth to voters is this, allows diversity as a factor in public employment, education and contracting decisions. Legislative constitutional amendment. If diversity is the goal, according to the summary, why eliminate the Constitution that says you cannot benefit one race gender over another? Why not propose a proposition that says it? If you specifically benefit one race or gender over another, isn't that discrimination? Some people say that this proposition will hurt one or two races specifically because of their higher performances in college admissions, which I don't agree. In the long run, it hurts everyone and it hurts our state because Prop 16 will eliminate equal opportunity and fair competition, which made California one of the most prosperous and diversified states in the whole country. Therefore, please take the time to read everything this year and be an informed voter. I also urge the City Council to take a position to oppose Prop 16. Prop 16 will legalize discrimination and waste tax money to fund the bureaucracy. Our city doesn't need it. California doesn't need it. Signed by Bob Young, a concerned resident." And last is from Davis Liu, who writes, "Honorable City Council, elected officials, et cetera. My name is Davis Liu. I'm writing this to express my strong opposition to Prop 16. Proposition 16 uses race to judge the qualifications of applicants to universities, to jobs, et cetera. This is a textbook definition of racism, pure and simple. If it is passed, how far will we slide down this slippery, dangerous slope? What's next? Set racial quota for elected positions? Set racial quota for NBA and NFL? Set racial quota for TV anchors? Set racial quota for movies and songs? Please join us to vote no against Proposition 16." And he asked, "Please read my comments in the meeting." Thank you. Davis, a very concerned citizen and long-term Folsom resident." Madam Mayor, that concludes your public comments.
Okay. Thank you. The voters will have an opportunity to weigh in on that in a few weeks.
Can I ask a question before we move on? Just about the nature of those, that last batch of emails to the city attorney perhaps? Is there any limitation on time granted to reading emails into the record in this way?
Thank you, Councilmember Kozlowski. Madam Mayor and a member of the City Council, it's the same time limitation that the council and/or the mayor from time to time designate for speakers who wishes to bring business from the floor before the council. Supposedly, they're to bring businesses within the City Council's subject-matter jurisdictions so that you can actually hear from your residents, your citizens in the city. But there's no prohibition. Anybody can just come up and speak their mind because it's not something that the council can take action on anyway.
Yeah. I have no problem with the comments that were made or people making comments like that. The question is just if, say at the next meeting, we have 180 messages of similar, you know, message? Is there, you know, are we compelled to read all of them into the record?
You can, you're compelled to read them, but you don't have to read them for longer than the time you allowed for
I gotcha.
the actual speakers.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Next item, please, Krista.
This takes us to scheduled presentation, our first item of the night. This is City Manager's Fiscal Year 2019-20, Fourth Quarter Financial Report, and Finance Director Stacy Tumani will be presenting.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Stacy Tumani, Finance Director. Tonight, I'll be presenting the financial results for the fourth quarter of fiscal year 1920. And if you're following along with the packet, it begins on page 42. We'll begin with a summary of the general fund. These are unaudited figures. So, over on the right-hand column, it says fiscal year 1920 projected, just because we haven't gone through our final audit yet. This slide here compares your adopted budget to the projected year-end figures. At the top, we're projecting total revenues to come in at $87 million and total expenditures at $95.4 million. When we take the transit annexation transaction into account, that's the $2.9 million in the third line. The projected change in our overall fund balance is about $5.6 million. And because there are many categories in our fund balance, it reduces our unassigned fund balance from $17.4 million down to $12.9 million. So, it's about a $4.5 million use of the unassigned fund balance, giving us about 13.6% as a percentage of expenditures, down from 18.9% that we thought we would be at if the budgeted year had come in as expected. We'll move to the next slide, page 44. This is the chart that you're used to seeing. So, there in fiscal year 19, we had that $17.4 million of our unassigned general fund balance. That was a 20% fund balance. And now, we've gone down for fiscal year 20 to $12.9 million, 13.58%. Moving to our next slide, which is page 45, we'll take a look at the major revenue sources in the general fund. The top-line property tax is coming in above budget by about $952,000 or 103%. We have sales tax revenue coming in at about $22.7 million. That's a reduction from the budget of about $3.7 million. We're coming in at 86.1% of budget. Our transient occupancy taxes, otherwise known as TOT, are projected to end the year $1.6 million. That's down about $730,000 from budget. We're coming in at about 69%. We have charges for services projected to come in at about $12.4 million. That's a $1.3 million shortfall from the budgeted amount. And this is where we see the impact of closing down the recreation facilities such as the aquatic center, the sports complex, the zoo due to COVID-19. Also, all of the cancellation of programming revenue and classes, we had to give a lot of refunds. That brought that down. And the shortfall from recreation was actually partially offset by increases in development fees and also fire department charges for services that are in this category to get us to the $1.3 million shortfall from budget, when those are all combined. We have licenses, permits and VLF. Combined, that's expected to be over budget by about $1.2 million. And that's mostly due to development activity that continues to be strong through the health crisis. So, that's keeping that line item looking pretty good. Transfers in are projected to be below budget by about $1.2 million. And that's just due to reduced capital spending in other funds that then would have been transferred in. If we had spent that money within the general fund, it would have come in from another fund. So, that didn't happen at the end of the year. All other revenue was coming in close to the budgeted amount. So, that gives us, with all the impacts of these revenue sources, we have a projected $5.1 million shortfall from our budgeted revenue through June 30th, where we're coming in at about 94.5% of budget for revenues overall. If we move to page 46 of the packet, we have some additional details on revenues, just breaking this up in a different way. So, you can see that all tax-related revenues at the top are totaling a combined 5 point, I mean $55.3 million. That's a 3.8 million or 6.5% shortfall from budget. And then, we have, and that's mostly from sales tax and the TOT revenue. That's where the shortfall came in. It was a $1.6 million decrease from the prior year. Then we have all non-tax revenues and they're projected to come in at a combined $31.6 million. It's about a $1.2 million or 3.8% shortfall from budget. Some of the categories that make up the non-tax revenue, as I mentioned, development fees, coming in slightly over budget, about $2.8 million. We have building permits coming in almost $1 million over budget and that's due to the development activity that continues, mostly south of 50. We have the Parks and Recreation Fee and this is where you can see the big hit that came in, almost $3 million under budget due to the effects of having to shut down all activity in March. And then, fire charges for services there in that last line. That includes our ambulance fees that's projected to come in over budget by about $635,000 in total and about $95,000 less than the prior year overall. So, in total, $91.9 million was budgeted and we're coming in at about $86.9 million. Moving forward to page 47, here we have the projections for the expenditures in each of these categories. In total, we're projecting that we'll be slightly over budget by about $526,000 or .6% after we adjust for the transit annexation transactions. This budget overage is mostly due to increases in some overtime costs in the Fire Department, also some contract costs in the Community Development Department. Those contract costs are pass-through in nature, so those are offset by additional revenues. The many immediate cost-saving measures that we implemented early on to help lessen the impact that the overtime had and other impacts of the COVID-19 emergency had on the budget helped us to get it down to just this $500,000 overage. As a reminder, we realized savings from reducing our expenditures in the Parks and Recreation Department by ceasing the operations of a lot of the programming. We had lower levels of operation and maintenance costs citywide by keeping a close eye on spending and limiting it just to essential items. The biggest impact is the salary savings we had from the reduction in our temporary employee costs when we were forced to lay off all the temporary employees. And also, with the hiring freeze in effect, it gave us salary and benefit savings for those vacant positions as well. So, we're projecting that we will end with just about $500,000 over budget or 100.6%. Page 48 of the packet, this slide shows the same total in expenditures, just broken down by department. Most departments are expected to end the year under budget. The City Manager and City Clerk's Department have slight increases due to some increased contract staffing costs and supplies. We see the Fire Department about midway, coming in at about $23.2 million, almost $2 million over budget. And that's due to the overtime costs from quite a few employees being out on leave. And so, that led to those budget overages. In Community Development, they're over mostly due to contract costs for the Folsom Plan area. But as I mentioned, those are recouped through revenues for those services. All of this gives you that total general fund expenditure is about $92.5 million, 100.6% of budget. So, that's the look at the general fund. We'll move on to the enterprise funds and how they're projected to end the fiscal year. We have the Water Fund and we'll just start with program revenues at the top right. They're projected to end the fiscal year at $15.7 million. It's about $1.6 million over the budgeted amount. And then, in total, the non-capital expenses are projected to end the year at $12.4 million, under budget by about $2.4 million. And that's mostly due to savings in the contracts line item, which is included in operating expenses, just due to some budgeted items that aren't expected to be needed during this year. Capital expenses towards the bottom are lower than budget. They're at $4 million. And that's due to the timing of completing some of the budgeted projects that were in that total $13 million budget. So, that leaves us with working capital in this fund of about $19 million. Move forward to the Water and Enterprise Fund on page 51. I mean wastewater. Wastewater is a similar story. Program revenues coming in at about $7.5 million. We have total non-capital expenses below budget by about $1 million, also due to contract costs that were budgeted but not expected to be needed this year. And then, we had capital expenses of about $800,000. And that leaves this fund with working capital projected to be at $13.6 million. And that helps to prepare for some increased capital expenditures in fiscal year 21. Page 52 is the Solid Waste Fund. Solid Waste Program revenues are projected to come in at $11.8 million. And total operating expenses are projected to come in slightly under budget at about $12 million. We do have that structural deficit in this fund where the program revenues are less than the operating expenses. And that's an issue that continues in this fund. We did have capital expenses for the purchase of solid waste vehicles down there with $1.1 million. And the activity this year dips our working capital down from $6 million down to $5.4 for the end of this year in the solid waste fund. Looking at our Internal Service Fund, this is our Risk Management Fund. This fund is used to account for the city's insurance programs. And this fund has a strong net position. We're projecting it to be at $8.6 million at the end of the year. That's on that blue line. And this helps us to minimize swings in the budget when health costs fluctuate. We actually had pretty stable costs this year. You can see compared to the prior year, the active employee health was $7.3 million in that first column. This year, coming in, just about the same, $7.3. We had retiree health last year at $4.6 and this year also at $4.6. We didn't have a lot of additional retirees, so that helped to keep that stable. Workers' comp came down, $2.2 last year and $2 million this year. And then, liability insurance, right at 1.7, pretty much where it was the prior year. So, looking forward into fiscal year 21, we have, we're still monitoring the budget, of course. We have asked all departments to continue limiting expenditures to essential purchases. All large capital purchases are being approved by the City Manager only on a case-by-case basis. Also, in light of the current financial situation, although the City Manager was offered a salary increase for the upcoming year during her annual review in July, she did decline that increase in pay.
Ms. Tumani, I'm sorry if I could just add right here, if I could, Mayor and Council, I'd also like to add that I did make my way around to all the members of the executive management team, which is our city department heads and let them know that I would be unable to offer them raises this fiscal year. I could barely get those words out of my mouth before I was waved away by those department heads saying that they would not accept a raise even if offered and that this wasn't the year, given extraordinary economic challenges our community is facing. So, I just wanted to be sure everybody knew that and I thank them for that.
And I want to add my thanks to everybody on the executive management team for doing that. Thank you all.
Thank you, Elaine. As the year continues, we'll be closely monitoring home sales. That's a good indicator for us of future property tax revenue. The County Assessors Report that was issued at the end of July did announce a 5.9% increase over last year. And we expect that Folsom will meet or exceed that increase. New home sales continue to be strong in the Folsom Plan area. And so, the corresponding development fee revenue and building permit free revenue that goes along with that development is already looking good as we move into fiscal year 2021. Our sales tax results do lag behind actual activities, so we continue to monitor the economic reports and use our sales tax consultants for continued guidance on what we can expect in the next couple of quarters. So, we're monitoring that very closely. Of course, this is our most sensitive revenue source when it comes to any tightening of restrictions that could occur during the upcoming flu season. And so, it could continue to affect businesses, consumers and then our resulting sales tax. And we'll be monitoring our charges for services revenue for Parks and Recreation programming as we continue in this fiscal year. As the state and county orders allow us to open up more facilities in a modified fashion, we hope to be able to increase revenue in this area. And the Parks and Recreation Department has been working very hard to come up with many creative ways to be able to bring back their programs with those modifications. So, hopefully, we'll be able to see that increasing. And that concludes my presentation of the quarterly report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments for Stacy?
My only comment would be basically, "Good job." Because I know we were expecting this to be $5.7 million, so that's $600,000 to the good as to what that deficit was expected to be. So, great job.
Anybody else? Andy?
Yeah. Just a question and a comment. So, I'll start with a question. Businesses, I believe, were offered the ability to collect sales tax but defer depositing that to the state until, I think, January of next year, if I'm correct. I'm not sure how many businesses are taking advantage of that. And it is, if a business is taking advantage of that, that's obviously sales tax that we would not see. And as you just mentioned, that kind of lags anyway. But is there the potential to, let's say, January and let's hope these businesses can, you know, pay all that deferred... you know, pay all that deferred collected sales tax? Would there be a little bump then, potentially, if, if, you know, that's the way it's being accounted for?
Yes, and there, there was a restriction on which businesses could do it. There was a threshold on the amount of income that they brought in. So there is a projection that we probably had maybe 300 businesses that could do it out of, out of all the businesses in Folsom. That didn't guarantee that they all decided to take that. And then they repaid that sales tax within 12 months, 12 repayments. So we'd slowly start to see that coming in, and that would adjust fiscal year 21's revenue up.
Okay, but, so I'm, I'm assuming that probably wouldn't be terribly large then?
It was projected from our consultant that it'd be less than a million dollar impact in total out of the, over $20 million.
That's good to know. And then I'll, I'll just kind of add to Carrie's comment while you folks were wrestling with the, the ravages of this pandemic. And, and I remember talking to Carrie and, you know, mentioning how much the drawdown on the reserve. And, and, but it was, I just, it was very prudently done. You know, those reserves are built up for times like that. And, you know, I, I think it was, you know, staff and council really handled that emergency in a very judicious way, just as, you know, as far as, you know, my experience going into the recession 10 years ago. So, so my thanks to everybody for, you know, really, I think, doing exactly the right thing to get the city of Folsom fiscally through that great challenge.
Mike, any questions or comments?
Under the circumstances, great work. Thank you. It's good to have pros working in City Hall. Thank you.
Okay, you're gonna stay up there for the next item, but we'll let Krista officially introduce it.
Okay, our next item is now item number two. The Presentation on the Use of Federal Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security, otherwise known as CARES Act Funding.
Okay, this begins on page 58 of the packet, if someone's following along. And tonight, we wanted to give you an update of the status of the city's COVID-19 response, all the related costs that we've incurred during this public health emergency that began in March of 2020, all the costs through today, and our projected costs moving forward. And in the second half of the presentation, I'll give a summary of how those expenses correspond to the eligible use of the Federal Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act Funds, also known as the CARES Act. Go to page 59. Beginning in March of 2020, when it became very apparent that COVID-19 was going to have a significant impact on the city's finances, staff set up a tracking system to capture all the costs related to our response. We began this tracking process to enable us to possibly seek reimbursement later if there were any eligible sources that might come available. Some examples of the categories we've been tracking are all staff, all staff time spent responding to the emergency. This is things such as staffing the Emergency Operations Center. Also, all of the staff that took on different roles in order for us to enforce the county's stay-at-home orders. This was our Park Patrol, staff that was involved in closing the parks or other facilities, communications, putting out signage, and even our library staff that began distribution of personal protective equipment to businesses. So they were taken off their regular duties and, and were doing other jobs for our response. We've been tracking technology costs related to city staff transitioning to working from home so that we could continue to provide essential services. We've been tracking the purchase of personal protective equipment. This include masks and hand sanitizer and other items. We've been tracking costs related to communication to the public regarding the county's public health orders. Our Communications Department and other staff did an excellent job of keeping the public very informed. But there were costs for mailers, postage, signage, and a lot of other things that went into making sure that, that that was all put out there for the public. There were expenses relating to implementing the Families First Coronavirus Response Act Leave Program. This was a federal requirement that required us to provide leave to employees who were unable to work or telework for various allowable reasons under the act. And we've been tracking the unemployment insurance costs that we've incurred due to the layoff of all of our part-time staff back in March, and those expenses continue. This slide is pretty packed, but we just wanted to make sure that, that all of this was mentioned as well. The additional response activities that we've done. A lot of these are more in-kind and didn't have trackable expenses per se. But we issued an emergency order to support local businesses, and it included suspending temporary signage requirements, deferring fees for qualified affordable housing projects, waiving fees for home occupations and home occupation business licenses, increasing the local vendor preference for contracts to 25%, allowing businesses to use public spaces for outdoor dining, allowing temporary use of city-owned parking for curbside pickup, minimizing business disruption by limiting public works projects in the public right-of-way, suspending restricted hours of delivery of goods and supplies to businesses. And in addition, the city implemented a utility assistance program for City of Folsom water, sewer, and solid waste customers, waived rental fees on closed city facilities, provided masks, face shields, and hand sanitizer to businesses, provided printable posters for businesses, provided social distancing protocol guidelines, and also streamlined the permit and inspection process with the implementation of online services. Between all of these activities and the categories lifted, listed on the slide before this, it makes up all of the actual and in-kind costs that the city incurred right away as we launched into this response plan back in the spring. Nearly all of this was done in the very early stages of the emergency, with the majority of these costs occurring well before the end of the fiscal year, so before June 30th. And the city had to pay for all of these expenses with the general fund, and there was no promise of any funding to cover the majority of these costs. At that time, we were aware that FEMA would cover potentially extraordinary response costs. That's what they're called in that program. That's limited to personal protective equipment and some very limited overtime costs, of which FEMA will reimburse us 75%. And right now, those costs reimbursable by FEMA total about $50,000 for us at this point, and we will pursue reimbursement for those. So now I'll talk more about the, the CARES Act. Later in the year, the Federal CARES Act established a $150 billion Coronavirus Relief Fund. When that happened, there was a lot of discussion when it passed because the larger cities with populations of over 300,000 began receiving this CARES Act funding. But at that time, smaller cities like Folsom were not eligible for funding. However, then the California State Budget Act of 2020 that was approved at the very end of June allocated a portion of the state's Federal CARES Act funding to all California cities. It was a total of $225 million allocated to cities with a population of 300,000 to 500,000, and an additional $275 million allocated to cities with a population of less than 300,000. And each city's population determined their share of the total allocation. After that happened, we were then notified in early July that we would be eligible to receive a share of the funding. With the state's calculation that's based on population, Folsom is eligible to receive $1,7,649. These funds can only be used for COVID-19 response costs that have incurred from March through December 31st of 2020. These funds cannot be used to backfill lost revenue due to the COVID-19 emergency, of which you saw in the, the previous report, we had a significant amount of lost revenue. But it can't be used to cover that. So here on this slide, we looked at the guidance that the state put out after the notification in July, and we took all of the eligible COVID-19 response costs that the city had tracked and incurred to date. We had expenditures of over $1 million through June 30th, and then estimated costs of an additional $186,000 that we anticipate will happen through December 31st of 2020. This chart shows the costs and the categories that the state has determined are eligible to be funded by the CARES Act allocation. So it's just a, a good way to show that as of June 30th, before we were even notified that any CARES Act funding would be available, the city had already expended our total allocation with eligible costs. As far as the process for the city to actually receive these funds, just a couple of weeks ago, the state put out guidance of their reporting requirements, and they required that we provide an initial estimated progress report and have it submitted by September 4th. It's a short timeline. We met that deadline and reported these categories that are here on this chart. So we had staff time dedicated to the response, which I mentioned was our Park Patrol and other staff that was taken off their regular duties to respond to the emergency. That was $120,000 about. We had public safety response costs of $435,000. We had miscellaneous expenses. That includes our, our telework upgrades to technology, also the PPE, $15,000. We had unemployment costs for the staff that had to be laid off. That's $100,000 for, through June 30th. And then we estimate an additional $75,000 down at that bottom half for additional unemployment. I will mention that through another federal program, they're reimbursing us for half of our unemployment costs. So on this chart here, it's our half of what we have to pay for those, those fees there. And then the last line is the implementation of the Federal Leave Act. That's the, the leave we were required to provide. Costs $337.5,000 through June 30th, and an estimated additional $93.6 down at the bottom. So in total, the estimated eligible expenses through December 31st, 2020 is about $1.2 million. And our CARES Act allocation is $1,7,649. So we're about $185,000 short at this point. Our intention is to submit whatever eligible we cost, eligible costs we have for this funding as we listed here, to be sure that we receive our full allocation. And in doing that, we'll receive the $1 million by December 31st. What I want to be clear is that our reporting this way only ensures that we receive our allocation. If the council decided that they wanted to put this money towards something else, they could. What would happen is that our total expenses would increase. So instead of the chart showing that we have $1.2 million, if you wanted to do a $200, $400,000 program, that would increase our total expenses because we still had those expenses. But it doesn't increase the allocation at all. It's set at that $1 million there. So what we wanted to ask of the council tonight is that if you had any other areas of community need related to COVID-19 that you wanted to have staff explore and add to this list, then we're very interested in hearing that at this time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So Stacy, that, that $1 million in expenses through June 30th, that's already been accounted for in the year-end report you just gave us?
Correct.
So if we got, if we get our $1 million, we can either pay back, basically, the general fund or we can use it for something else?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments? I, I, I think I'll start this off by just saying, I, I think my colleagues are aware. The County of Sacramento received $181 million directly from the federal government. They, they've also going to be receiving, just like we are, an additional $25 million from the state of California. And I worked with Rancho Codo de Mayor David Sander to draft a letter signed by six mayors in the county, basically everybody except for the mayor of Sacramento, because they received their own $89 million, encouraging the County of Sacramento to devote some of that $181 million, plus the now $25 million they're getting, to help with economic recovery. To date, they say they have spent about $8 million on economic recovery, but most of that is the dine-at-home program, which the city of Folsom is participating in. For the most part, they use that money to plug their own budget holes, fortunately. So I, you know, we're, we're still keeping the pressure on them, but, you know, I don't know that we're, the County of El Dorado, they allocated 25% of their CARES Act funding to help with economic recovery. I think Placer County was 19%. You know, Sacramento County, you know, is like 1% or something at this point. So anyway, just wanted to throw that out there as we're contemplating our options, so.
Given all the surprises this year, I will be really pleased if your estimated expenses from here to the end of the year are accurate. Because it would seem that 2020 would make those go sky-high in some way. So I anticipate we'll have some surprises yet before the year closes out. As far as insight into other COVID-related expenses we'd like to add to this, it probably would be prudent to at least consider some nexus between the things we're doing to combat homelessness that fit into these categories in some way. Other than that, I, I don't have any insight tonight. Thank you.
Carrie?
My only comment would be, let's use this money the way it was intended to be used. And my sincere apologies to the people that serve on the, that, that work for Sacramento County. I, I'd be pretty embarrassed, and I don't want us to find ourselves in that same situation.
You're here.
Andy?
Just a, a great report, and, you know, looks like it's, we're, you know, we're doing it right. And I'll just add my thanks to the mayor for your efforts to try and pry loose a, a little more funding. So we appreciate that.
Thank you. Yeah, I, what I'm worried about is, you know, even when we get to the, what's the best? The yellow tier, I think. That's still only 50%, you know, dining capacity and that sort of stuff. By the time Sacramento County gets to yellow, we're going to be in November, December. It's going to start raining, and, and so some of these restaurants right now and, and other industries that have, you know, maybe some outdoor operations, the weather is going to prevent them from doing that come November, December, by the time we finally get to yellow. So I would like to, you know, possibly have some conversations about, you know, how can we use some of that money to, you know, assist businesses?
Or get some consideration to those issues being dealt with on a zip code basis. Because we are in the worst possible position because we're neighbors with Placer County and El Dorado County. We're basically open.
Yep, and we've been advocating for that too.
Limited, limited number of exposures, especially now that the city has been completely separated from the prison. Because the prisons had about 20% or so more cases than the city of Folsom has in total. So, you know, if, if some consideration could be given there, because the, the hotspots in Sac County are all downtown.
Right.
They're 25 miles away from us.
But so you, you can submit these expenses, we'll get our million-plus dollars, and then we still have, we could then actually spend that into 2021, correct?
You could, if you chose to do that.
You could just choose not to pay ourselves back, basically.
Right, 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 yeah.
And Mayor and Council, I did want to know, we did have some, you know, fairly robust conversations among staff, of course, always thinking about our business community and economic recovery. As you can see, it was, you know, pretty late to the game in terms of when we even were aware we'd qualify for anything. And I know a million dollars sounds like a heck of a lot of money. It's a heck of a lot of money to anyone in this room. But when you look at it in terms of trying to make an impact on your business community, boy, it sure goes fast. And we were struggling with, you know, unless you come up with some kind of lottery system or, you know, we were trying to figure out how, how if we were to throw a million dollars out in the community, what would be the most meaningful and fair way to do that? So I just, I did want you to know that it was a robust conversation we had. But the most important thing in our mind right now is to make sure we get that full allocation. And, and that's what Ms. Tumani has presented here tonight.
Okay. I should say that I also, I was contacted by a business owner who is in an industry where basically his operation is, is still shut down. And he was asking about the business certificate fee, which granted is not a ton of money for an individual business, but it's kind of just adds insult to injury when you can't be open at all and you still have to, you know, to pay that. So, you know, I don't know if there's a way to look at just, you know, certain industries that, that again are not able to, to open like they normally can, and maybe we give a break to those, or, you know, I don't know, but, okay.
And, and now that you brought up the business license fee, I'm going to reiterate this one more time. I'm still, still waiting to hear back from that company. This happens to me every single year. I'm getting angrier and angrier about it. They do not return emails. They do not return phone calls. So either we, we get them to fix that problem, or we need to talk about doing a contract with somebody else.
That has been-
You can contact me directly about that.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Howell. I know that company, you know, Ms. Tumani knows as well, has been pretty severely impacted by COVID. No excuses understood. This is important. But I, you know, their, their business operation itself has been constricted. They are, they have been working with us pretty closely on case-by-case basis. And, you know, and we've been trying to clear things as they come to our attention. So anyone can feel free to reach out to me personally, to Ms. Tumani, to any council member, and it will pass to us, and we can work on that. So we, we are aware, and we're doing our best.
Okay, and my, my suggestion is that, you know, we, if they can't service what they're supposed to do for us, then they're not meeting the terms of the contract. And, you know, if that means that I physically walk into this building with checks for my businesses, that, that the city should take them.
I understand. Thank you.
Just one last question. Have we received any of this money yet? I thought we had received like $320,000 or something like that.
We have, two $160,000 payments that were received after July 1st. So in the fiscal year 2021 year.
Okay, all right. Okay, I think that's it. Thank you. Next item, please.
That takes us to tonight's consent calendar.
Anybody have anything they want to pull?
I'd like to pull eight. I just have a quick question, and maybe if I can ask the question now, then we can move the whole consent calendar.
Sure.
My question is, why are we using Light Rail? My question is, why are we using light rail? Trying to see exactly what it's called.
Yeah, it was light rail.
Light rail impact on money. I don't get the connection between light rail and a shade structure on an amphitheater.
I'm going to ask Dave Nugent to answer that question.
He was already on his way up.
Awesome.
He was reading your mind, Elaine.
I'll, I'll, I'll give you the nexus. All the, the work in the plaza was supposed to be done under the original contract, and that's when we contemplated the, the shade structure. So we took a percentage of the total cost that was applied to the plaza job and applied it to this job.
Okay, all right, then I'm good.
I'd like to, I'd like to take up number four separately.
Okay.
All right, I'll move three, five, six, seven, eight.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes. Next one.
Item number four is resolution number one zero five two six. This is a resolution accepting a grant from the SAC Metro Air Quality Management District for the replacement of two diesel refuse trucks with two zero emission electric refuse trucks.
I have some questions, and I wanted to make sure we talked about this one, because it's really good news, and I think you buried the lead in the report. The, I guess the questions are, is it, the combination of the two grants? If we get the Volkswagen grant in the future, and we get the air quality district grant now, does that, are either of those tied to a particular type of vehicle? Or do you have one picked out already?
There, there are qualified vehicles for those grants.
Okay.
And we have picked out one of the vehicles.
Gotcha, okay. So then I have questions about that vehicle. Is it one that we would end up using for typical residential pickups, or some other use?
Both. One of the vehicles would be a typical residential, and the other one would be kind of a.
Able to tip dumpsters?
Yeah, it would, it would be used for our bulky waste, is what we're, we're anticipating.
Okay, great.
Because, you know, we're, we're taking this as a pilot program, so we want to see what they're capable of doing.
Okay.
And we, we can probably refit them for other, you know, commercial if needed.
Got it. Based on what you know about them now, do they need anything unique in the way of charging equipment, or is it relatively standard electric vehicle charging gear?
It's not standard, I mean, as far as normal vehicles. It, it, it's a more robust charging system. Included in the report was there are some smud improvements that would need to be done to incorporate the charging equipment, about a hundred thousand dollars.
At the courtyard?
At the courtyard, yeah.
The current courtyard?
And that is, you know, if I can just expand on that. You know, since this is a pilot program, we would prob, probably be maxing our ability for increasing the fleet, meaning we couldn't add more electric vehicles unless we did substantial upgrades to the infrastructure in the corporation.
That was my next question.
I got you.
How much, how much more electricity can we pump into this courtyard? Is there any, so that kind of gets to my question about specialized maintenance equipment. Is there, are there costs for specialized maintenance gear that will be necessary or training for, or does that come with the vehicles, the training for your maintenance?
It comes under the warranty for the vehicles for the, I believe, the first three years. After that time, depending upon how they perform, we would decide whether or not we want to invest in any additional training or equipment versus contract that work out for specialty vehicles, like, you know, EV garbage vehicles.
Yeah. How, how the, the vehicle you're considering, how does the, the range of that on a single charge compare to what you can do with a diesel vehicle on a single fill-up? Let's make it apples to apples in that way, at least.
You know, I don't think we've looked at it that way. I think we're looking at more of our operations, you know, our, our, our disposal site is Kiefer landfill and other recycle locations further than Kiefer. So we looked at it as, could they haul the weight, give, in, you know, in one duty cycle of a typical day, and they can?
Okay, good. That was, that was really what I was getting at, okay.
We won't have to do half a load, and then plug it in, and then do the other half.
Right, okay, perfect. And then I guess the, kind of the last thing, and the reason I said I thought you buried the lead in the report, is that the combination of the two grants, if we're successful, and the potential operating savings, means that either Volkswagen or the air quality district is going to pay us a hundred thousand dollars to take these trucks on as a pilot. So it's really great news and good work by the staff in identifying both of those grant programs, and I'm very excited about this.
Yeah, we're excited, too. We want to see what they can do, and, you know, the more diesel vehicles we can get off the road, the better.
Yeah, and then last thing, I'm hoping that I can gain some support from somebody within the council or the staff to have an art contest for the wrap that will go on those trucks eventually, so that they have a special art project on them to identify.
Maybe truly distinctive by nature.
Yes, I like that.
Yeah, yeah. Even more distinctive by nature.
Dave, I do have one question, and I know when we talked about this the last time, there were significant issues raised relative to the ability of, of these vehicles to actually function as they were intended, because I know that there had been a discussion about you guys wanting to look at them, but the only one that was in the region had spent the previous six months being repaired, so.
We're not looking at that manufacturer.
Okay.
There's, there's more, there's more manufacturers that have been coming online, and that's why we kind of.
With better track records, literally?
Yes.
Okay.
European.
Okay.
Which is why Volkswagen is probably very interested in.
Right, right.
Okay.
Plus they got caught.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, if there aren't other questions, I will.
That was Volkswagen got caught with diesels, and.
Yeah.
These are not going to be diesels. Just make sure they're really electric and not diesel.
I'll, I'll move resolution number one oh five two six.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is new business, item number nine, resolution number one zero five three one, a resolution of the city council declaring three hundred Percifer Street a surplus. Presenting tonight will be Community Development Director Pam Johns.
Thank you, Krista. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. The item for you is a recommendation by staff to declare an existing city property a surplus. The city currently owns nearly one acre of vacant land at three hundred Percifer Street, which is on the northeast corner of Percifer and Coloma. City purchased this property in nineteen sixty-one, and eventually developed it and used it for a variety of civic uses, fire stations, city hall annex, library site. A lot of people think of this as the old library site. The building was vacant between two thousand and nine until two thousand and seventeen, when the city council at that time approved the demolition of the building, and it's been in that state ever since. In, also at the same time in two thousand and seventeen, council approved land use changes of the property from commercial to single-family high-density, modified the boundaries of the site, boundaries of the Percifer Dean sub-area of the historic district to include the entire site, and directed staff to subdivide the property, this one-acre property, into five individual single-family lots, in keeping with the traditional or historic Theodore Judah lauding pattern in the area that's predominant in the area. Last year, as we started to do the current housing element update cycle, we evaluated ways that this property might help us, the city, meet our current housing needs in general, and more specifically, how it might help us meet our affordable housing needs. Most of the cities currently, most of the cities' affordable housing is provided in the form of higher-density rental property. This particular site may provide a unique opportunity for the development of affordable for-sale, single-family housing that's in keeping with the development patterns that are already established in this area, which are predominantly smaller, single-family homes, many with one-car garages, detached garages or second units along the alley. There's also further along Percifer, some duplex units. So specifically, given that the, the creation of five single-family lots with alley access on the, on this particular site, and the fact that we have new accessory dwelling unit laws, this property could allow for development of five primary, single-family homes along Percifer or fronting Percifer, one per lot, and could also potentially accommodate a smaller accessory dwelling unit or tiny home along the alley. And as such, staff's recommending that the city council declare the property a surplus and start the process of soliciting interest, consistent with the Surplus Land Act, and your direction is outlined in the resolution. I'm going to talk a little bit about Surplus Land Act, because there's been some changes or amendments to the Surplus Land Act effective January first of this year affecting this property, and I think it's important for us to understand that. Those amendments were done in order to address California's shortage of, of affordable housing. It requires agencies to take formal action in a regular public meeting to declare surplus, the land surplus, which we're proposing to do this evening, supported by written findings that must allow for residential use of the property, which was already, again, directed in two thousand and seventeen. That surplus notification must be provided to housing sponsors that are registered with the state. Currently, there are over four hundred, and to local public entities as defined by the Health and Safety Code. Those interested parties will have sixty days to formally identify their interest to the city in writing, and at the end of that sixty-day period, the city would enter into good-faith negotiations with each of those interested parties for a period of ninety days. Final negotiated terms would be presented to the city council with a recommendation from staff for action prior to the execution of sale of the property. So we'd have an initial sixty-day notification, soliciting interest, and then a ninety-day period where we would be negotiating with any of those interested parties. We would bring those negotiations back to the city council with a recommendation for the, the sale or transfer of the property. The state also requires that they, they be notified, and that they review the procedures to make sure that they're in compliance with the Surplus Land Act. And we've had good conversations with state representatives to make sure that, you know, we're, we'd be following that procedure since it's new to us. And they have a good website that they explain, kind of listing out what all of those surplus land opportunities are, and any public notices that are still current can be found on their website. So the surplus land findings in the resolution attached to your report ensure that the land would be subdivided into five Theodore Judah lots, as originally directed and reaffirmed, and that they would be transferred for the purpose of creating at least one for-sale affordable housing unit on each of the five lots, with consideration for, you know, some type of opportunity for an accessory dwelling or something like that. I think it's important to point out that if no deal is reached after any period of negotiation, in other words, if this is not really a feasible or viable or desirable option to do this type of thing, then the city can market the property to the general public. So that would be the process we're recommending, is to, in good faith, try to negotiate the opportunity for for-sale affordable housing that is in keeping with the existing development patterns out there, and we've received requests that we work with the neighborhood on that process as we move forward to ensure that it's compatible with that existing development pattern.
The only, the only comment I'm going to make, Pam, is that we, we did this, this was probably not long after you left the city many years ago, and we had hoped that we were going to actually generate single-family for-sale affordable housing. Not a single unit was generated. And then we finally removed it from the, from the housing plan. So I think this is a, it's a great effort, and I love the intent. I just, based on our prior experience, I think it will go nowhere. I just, you know, so I think, I think we need to, you know, basically know that we're probably going to come back with a Plan B. And the other thing that I think needs to be considered here is that the, any place in the historic district, including Percifer, the price per square foot of everything that gets sold in that part of the city of Folsom is almost double what it is anywhere else in the city of Folsom. So I think we're being a little bit naive in assuming that, that this is going to go smoothly as affordable, because, based on what stuff is selling for. So just throwing that out there for consideration.
Yeah, I think it's going to, absolutely understand.
I think we'll be revisiting this.
I think there's some opportunities for us to do some in-kind types of improvements, and maybe some partnerships to, to help aid it, but at the end of the day, yeah, we may find that it, it's too difficult to, to meet that restriction, and then we would be going back and looking at that open-market condition, or seeing what else the council may want to do with the property.
Are you done with your presentation? Okay. Andy or Mike?
Yeah, I, I, I got a couple of questions, and, and a little bit related to what Carrie was just mentioning. So, so I guess first of all, just describe for me, so, you know, it says in the staff report, a requirement to provide at least one affordable for-sale, single-family dwelling unit on each of the five parcels. So I, I'm not sure I understand, are there going to be two units on each parcel, potentially?
With the new accessory dwelling unit laws, yes, there could be two units on each property.
And they could be sold individually and separately?
For certain qualifying circumstances that seem to have been written specifically for a nonprofit type of an organization that could do a land lease.
Wow, okay. So, so I guess my other comment would be related to that, it, it's tough to get the biggest bang for the buck on affordable housing with for-sale. I mean, we had that experience. The other problem we had was, we actually did get some of them in process, and one of the problems we saw was people were having a hard time, you know, they could afford to buy them because it was a subsidized lower rate, which was just, you know, it was a noble goal. But then when it came time, you know, for expenses to maintain the property, that was difficult. So, so it created kind of this conundrum with trying to do the right thing, but almost creating an impossibility. Is, you know, I guess it gets down to goals here. You know, is the desire to, to try and do as much as we can with affordable housing? Because I, I would probably argue that the better thing to do is to take advantage of what is a very desirable area, which would get, you know, I think, great bids on these lots, if it were just left to the free market, and then harness those proceeds to, you know, the many applications we get for, you know, affordable rental projects in town. I'm not really sure, you know, what the goal is here, but I, I, I just think more could be produced using that logic than, again, trying to do another very noble thing, which is, okay, can we, can we create some affordable housing just inside these five parcels? So, so that's just some commentary, you know, based on some experience I had in previous council years. But, but it is, I, you know, I think there is an opportunity to really maximize the value of this city-owned property, and, and then again, really churn that into, you know, something that would, you know, pay dividends. But, but this intrigues me. I mean, don't get me wrong, I, you know, I, I kind of like the thought process here. But, but anyway, those are my comments.
Yeah, and I think it, I appreciate the comments. I think it, it all could kind of be determined in a relatively short window of time, right? Because we have this sixty-day interest, this ninety-day negotiation, and then we would be in that, that opportunity to do, you know, market sale, and we would have met our obligations for the surplus land act at that point, point. So if we come back in that hundred and fifty-day window, and we say that there really isn't a viable option for a for-sale, affordable development, there's, it just can't pencil, then we could decide, the council could decide at that time, then how to put it out on the market. Do you do the, all the properties at once? Do you do one at a time? You know, you could, you could look at those market rate opportunities, but then we would have met our obligation on the surplus land.
That's a really good point that I kind of missed there, was, is that you do have some obligations here, based on this, you know, I think these state laws on this stuff seem to change by the week, so, so it is hard, hard to keep up.
It is.
And, and again, I, I just would not be surprised, based on, you know, what would be, you know, some restrictions on exactly what could happen, is that, you know, it, it doesn't pencil out for anybody, and maybe then we get back to that instance you described, so.
Yeah.
Is there a adequate opening in what, how it is that you're going to promote this to allow for creative ways to be sensitive to the neighborhood pattern, but achieve more density than a single-family plus accessory dwelling unit on each of those lots? A front and back flat, perhaps, and a, and a ADU or something?
Yeah, I think that we do have some degree, and talking with the state, you do have some degree of flexibility. There's certainly requirements about what needs to be included in the notice, but the, the council is in, is, you know, in, required to make the declaration with findings. council is, you know, required to make the declaration with findings. And in this case, we've tried to leave those findings open for that flexibility in the notice to those interested parties. We could certainly expand that discussion and talk about a wide range of solutions or opportunities to get people thinking about what might work. So, yeah, we do have some flexibility in that notice, as long as it's consistent with the requirements of the surplus land act, and our city attorney will help make sure that we do that.
Right, and to Andy's point, and the problems that have happened in the past, if somebody can come forward and, again, not throw a four-story building on each lot, but be sensitive to the neighborhood pattern and get three dwelling units on those lots, I mean, we should consider that.
Yeah, I think you're right. Accessory dwelling unit, junior dwelling unit, there's lots of things that could be looked at.
Sure, sure, sure. Thank you.
So, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, if I may, members of the city council, so Pam is right, there are many, many more protocols we have to follow since the, you know, 2019 legislative session adding a whole slew of affordable housing laws. What those laws do not prevent cities from getting, yes, fair market value for the property. So the city council will still be able to determine whether a particular proposal works, makes sense, or does not. And also, the city council will have the ultimate authority to decide whether to actually sell the property or not. But we have to go through those, the negotiation and noticing, the process to present those outcomings, the outcomes to you for your final consideration. It is entirely up to you to sell and decide to sell the surplus property at fair market value. You can certainly do that. You're also authorized under the affordable housing laws to not do that, to sell at below market value in order to incentivize or help create affordable housing. So all those options will be presented to you at some point in time.
We just need to, you know, to put it out there and see what comes back.
So do we know what the fair market value of those lots is?
We don't have a formal appraisal, so.
Okay.
It wouldn't be hard to figure out.
Okay. My question is, let's just say this happens the way that staff is envisioning it. So somebody, based on their income, qualifies to buy one of these affordable units, and then five years later, they get a promotion, they get a new job, whatever, they're making a lot more money, what happens?
The state surplus land act has a deed restriction on the affordable requirements for this, and it's similar to what we would be looking to do, especially if there was any city money that went into, you know, the provision of that housing. So we'd be looking for a 55-year restriction and a program that supports and ensures that.
But to answer the mayor's question, which the city council has also dealt with this kind of situation before in the past, for homes that are sold, their owner-occupied homes, they will not be required to vacate. They will not be required to sell.
That was my question.
It's only in these kind of situations where we pull in the city's housing trust fund housing money to assist with rental housing, then the operator, the manager will be required to substitute a different market unit for affordable unit, and take that affordable unit off the list that we bought.
Steve, I would tend to disagree with you, because, you know, A, this hasn't happened here, because we never built a single for-sale unit. I suspect, but what we talked about, when we talked about this before, was that it would restrict the amount of, if the person decided to move, and this, you know, and they may well decide to move, they cannot, the amount of profit that they could make on that original sale would be very limited.
Right, I'm thinking more, they buy it and they want to stay there for decades and decades, but their income would no longer qualify them for affordable housing.
We don't have any way to oversee that.
Okay, that's what I was asking. Okay. All right. Well, regardless, we need to declare a surplus property, right?
Fortunately, the city cannot require that people submit their tax returns to us.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Okay, and we don't have anybody from the public who wants to speak to these items. Okay. We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Moran.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes. And the last item.
Our last item tonight.
Mr. Francis's last item ever.
It is, it is new.
I'm going to go for hours on this. I'll move ordinance.
Jim, I got another text from the couch, they want you home right now.
Yeah, me too. This item repeals and reenacts the code of ordinance pertaining to establishment and maintaining of the merit system of personnel administration. The existing ordinance was established in 1983, and the most recent amendment was in What we're doing is reenacting the ordinance by, to update the current language in the ordinance, and we also spell out the principles to be used in the city merit system. We, that designates the city manager as responsible for establishing and maintaining the personnel policies, rules, and regulations. It updates a list of records and reports that we're required to keep and how we keep them, and incorporates various personnel policies in the personnel system that are not currently included. We do recommend that the city council introduce and have the first reading of this ordinance, number 1308, at this time.
Any questions?
I'll move the item.
Second.
I think, did Andy, did you have a question? No. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
We have a motion and a second. Do you want to call the roll?
Councilmember Howell.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Moran.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes. And that takes us to the city manager reports.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. First of all, this is for Vice Mayor Ernie Sheldon, who may be out there listening. We are thinking about you. Keep healing, get some rest. I am also very pleased to announce that effective October 1st, which happens to be the day after, or the first day of Mr. Francis's retirement, I have promoted Director of Finance, Stacy Tumani, to Director of Finance/Chief Financial Officer. Sir, that's a very important slash that's been added. Ms. Tumani is an outstanding leader, and I know she will continue to excel in her expanded role, so congratulations to Ms. Tumani. The city of Folsom Environmental and Water Resources Department continues its investigation into multiple reports of small pinhole water leaks in local residential and business copper pipes. On September 18th, the city received a verbal report from our water quality corrosion consultants, Black and Beach, and Virginia Tech University about their analysis to date of copper pinhole leaks. Due to COVID-19-related delays for access to the lab equipment, not all of the lab tests have been completed. A formal written report will likely not be available to the city until the first week of October. Absent the written report, and with the understanding that this is a critical topic to address, the consultant team recommends that the city add orthophosphate to the treatment process and reduce the target pH leaving the water treatment plant. Orthophosphate is an acceptable corrosion inhibitor in the treatment process, is and is, and an approved chemical by the United States Environmental Protection Agency for use in public drinking water systems. The consultant believes that use of orthophosphate could provide a coating to the inside of copper pipe to reduce the possibility of pinhole formation. Orthophosphate will be added to the water as early as late next week. The city is also waiting for results from engineering firm HDR, another third-party water quality and corrosion consultant. We are committed to providing the findings and remedial recommendations to the public once information is available. We are also planning an all-household mailing regarding this issue to Folsom residents, and we plan to, using the royal "we," that would be Marcus Yasutaki, return to you with a report at your first October meeting to update everyone on status. The Seventh Annual Community Service Day was a big success. More than 1,200 volunteers served their community through planned donation drives, food drives, at-home projects, and socially-distanced outdoor projects. Over 20,000 pounds of food, and remember, this is on top of the additional 57,000 pounds that we gathered through the Stop, Pop, and Go drives we did earlier this year. Of food were collected for the Twin Lakes Food Bank. Over 40 senior citizens received assistance. Thank you to you as the city council, to many community leaders, volunteers, and sponsors who dedicated their Saturday to improving the community. Special thanks to Christine Brainard, Chris Shepherd, and Raina Bossa, and my staff, as well as countless employees throughout the entire city organization who contributed to this success. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, boy, am I tired of starting phrases with that phrase, starting sentences with that phrase. Neighborhoods are invited to join the Folsom Police Department for a drive-through national night out on Tuesday, October 6th, from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. at Folsom City Hall, which is located right here at 50 Natoma Street. Residents are asked to wear a face covering or a mask and to remain in their vehicle while they drive through the event that will feature Folsom Police Department K-9 and Mounted Units, SWAT vehicles, motor officers, crime prevention information, as well as Folsom Fire Department personnel and equipment. Regarding COVID, in the past few weeks, you may have noticed that Folsom's total COVID-19 case numbers mysteriously dropped. Sacramento County is no longer including Folsom prisons cases within the city of Folsoms to better reflect actual community spread in Folsom. There have been 370 cases recorded for Folsom for the latest numbers with the Sacramento County Public Health COVID-19 dashboards. Free COVID, Sacramento County, through its partnership with Folsom-based biotech company STEM Express, has opened additional community testing centers that will expand testing and expedite testing results. Results are generated in a 72-hour turnaround time, and the process is easy. The Folsom COVID-19 community testing site is open 8 to 4 every Wednesday at Oak Hills Church, that's at 1100 Blue Ravine Road. And to find a testing site and schedule an appointment, visit the Sacramento County COVID-19 testing website. And finally, Sacramento County voters can now track the location of their ballot through the California Secretary of State's new Where's My Ballot! tracking system. You may be seeing that pop up in your Facebook feeds. Interested voters may sign up for tracking services at california.ballettracks.net/voter/ to receive automatic email, text, or voice call notifications about when their ballot is mailed, received, and counted. And that's all I have. Good evening.
Thank you, Carrie.
Please drive carefully. As I've been saying for the last 22 years, way too many people are speeding, way too many people are running stop signs, way too many people are running lights, and there's been way too many accidents. Folsom PD is out there. I've seen a lot more vehicle stops in the last month and a half or so. So, great job by Folsom PD, and if people aren't in red lights, pull them over because they're going to hurt somebody.
Thank you, Mike.
Couple things. Everyone should have received already in the mail the breakdown of all the propositions that are on the ballot coming up. Given that we had some advocates against one particular one today, I'd encourage everybody to please read the pros and cons of each one of those. And just for a tiny bit of clarity with regard to Prop 16, which was discussed earlier, that one specifically makes a change to the California Constitution that was put in place in 1998, and there's a bunch of history that goes with that. So it's worthwhile to do a little bit of a deep dive on that one, because it is an important proposition to consider. Sonny Mitchell Productions put on a really fun Johnny Cash tribute concert at our rodeo arena that was drive-in style, which I got to attend, and with a bunch of friends of mine, and it was great fun and a good use of our rodeo arena, so I was really excited about that, and wanted to congratulate them for pulling that off. Hopefully that, hopefully we get some more events like that where we can be outdoors and enjoy some entertainment. And then, two things from SACOG. This past Thursday, at our SACOG board meeting, we had a final vote on the methodology that's going to be used for the next funding round for transportation funds that travel through the Sacramento County government organization to cities and counties and other agencies within our Sacramento region. It is, at its core, a distribution philosophy that is competition-first, and there is not any means of having absolute predictability of what funds may come to any particular jurisdiction or agency. There were a number of advocates within our city staff and other parts of the county that were pressing really hard for a change to that distribution policy to include some formula-based distribution of funds. That ended up failing to have enough support at the board level at SACOG. However, the robust discussion that went on over several months about that topic has, you know, sunk into everybody that wherever the SACOG staff can help to create predictability and help to align projects with larger regional goals for communities like Folsom, they're going to do that. So I'm optimistic that it was a good result, even though we didn't get precisely what we desired. And then, last thing from SACOG. This, the upcoming year will be the third year for the Youth Leadership Academy at SACOG, which is intended for junior and seniors in high school who may be interested in community planning or transportation issues. I would encourage anybody out there that has a junior or senior in high school that may be interested in those topics to apply to join the Youth Leadership Academy. We've had some excellent representatives from Folsom High and Vista Delago in the past, and if they have questions about it, they certainly can reach out to me. And there's plenty of information on the SACOG website, which is SACOG.org, and applications for that program are due by October 23rd at midnight. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy?
Yeah, let's see, just congratulations and thanks again, Jim. Ernie, I think of you every day, so I hope you're listening. Stacy, congratulations on the new letters in your title. That's exciting. And then, last thing is, you know, occasionally something will just happen where I feel like maybe life's getting a little bit more back to normal, and I'll tell you, seeing all the department heads here today was one of those moments. So, you know, it's, it'll sure be nice when life gets back to 100% normal. We know that's not close, but it's just nice to see small pieces of progress in that direction. So with that, I'll say good evening.
Well, I will tell you that I did a Zoom call yesterday with about 85 second and third graders as they learn about city government. I don't know how those teachers do it, because there's a lot of wiggling and, you know, stuff happening in the background, but it was a hoot. Couple things, Andy is going to join me for some mobile office hours, along with FCSD Board Member David Reed wants to tag along, so we're going to be at Red Bus Brewing Company on Thursday, October 1st, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Reading Street. Sorry, you got Center Street during the middle of the day, he's going, he's running a red bus.
I wouldn't have taken her up on that, unless I like the location.
I don't know about any of my colleagues, but I signed up to participate in the Zoom meeting Thursday evening with Dr. Bealenson, who's the head of the county health department. He's Dr. Cassiri's boss. It's open to the first 300 participants, and so I'm interested to see what he has to say. I want to echo the city manager's comments to thank all the volunteers and the sponsors and the steering committee for all their work on Community Service Day, and particularly want to thank city staff Christine Brainard and Chris Shepherd and Raina Bossa, and also my thanks to Justin Rathel, who enthusiastically accepted when I asked him several months ago to chair this year's Community Service Day, so thanks to all of them. And then just, we touched on it a little bit, but obviously, I think El Dorado County today went to orange, and I know Placer County is in red, and I know everybody's anxious to be able to do things inside and go to the movies and all that sort of stuff, but more than ever, we need to shop local and support Folsom businesses, so I hope people will continue to do that. So with that, it is 8:19, and we are adjourned.